At this time, I would like to welcome Nancy Pearson to come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Also, I'd like to say a few words about Nancy and her community spirit. Nancy grew up locally and attended Saratoga High School. Nancy has lived here for seven and a half years. She is a volunteer in our community. She's currently president of Los Gatos Kiwanis Club and serves on the Board of the Special Games, and she's a key advisor to Los Gatos high school students. On behalf of Montserratino, Nancy was recently appointed to our Better Streets Commission, and we are proud to have Nancy guiding Montserratino in that role. Not to be outdone, Nancy has three dogs at home, including two that are rescue puppies. Please welcome Nancy with a round of applause. Nancy, can you come up here and stand behind the dais and lead us, please?
Thank you so much for those kind words, by the way. I'm really looking forward to it, especially working with Jessica. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Are there any changes to orders of the day? None? Tonight, we have a presentation from the League of Women Voters.
Steve, they have a presentation on their thumb drive. It's the second one right there on the screen. You can click on it.
You guys managed to get that set up.
It's a PDF.
Better, Steve. Yeah, that one.
Well, this is the League of Women Voters.
It's on the desktop.
That's at the top here.
On the desktop.
X1 up.
And one more.
Roll here.
Bear with me.
The MP?
Yes, there.
Oh, that one, yeah.
Thank you very much for allowing the League of Women Voters to speak to you, Mayor Lawler and councilors, the councilors and everyone. This study was done after the 2018 election, and it follows on, builds on a study we did two years ago after the 2016 election. And then the next, as I think you all know, the League of Women Voters is nonpartisan. We neither support or oppose political candidates or political parties. However, we do encourage good government, educating voters, and we will advocate for issues, but only after we've studied it and the board has approved such study. And the next, then, one back, Steve. I think we got two there. So this local election finance study analyzes local city and school board elections. We do it in detail for the four cities in our area. That's Montserratino, that's Campbell, that's Saratoga, and Los Gatos. And then we also examine election regulations, financing, reporting, and we make comparisons to other cities, all 15 cities in Santa Clara County, to try and look at what their regulations, practices are. And then we present these findings in this study, which you have, and try to identify what we think are best practices. And the whole purpose is promote participation and transparency in local elections, both for voters and for candidates. That's our driving force, if you will. Now, the next one, I want to talk about two things. So this first, and then the next slide summarizes those two things. The first being 2018 voting and campaign expenditure data. In this, I don't know if you can read it, but you also have it in your report itself. But here, the candidates are listed by just letter, so we don't list names. I means they're an incumbent, and E means they were elected. We give the votes. We also give the amount they spent, total amount spent on their election, as reported in Election Finance. And I'll just call attention to several things here. The first is if you, there were a number of candidates between five and a four and six for all the elections here in our local four cities, and seven out of the eight people elected, councilors, were incumbents. That's 88 percent, and that's not too surprising. Often incumbents are elected at a higher rate. But five out of 12 were non-incumbents, so that means there was room, 43 percent, means there was room for newcomers, there were new people, new ideas brought in throughout the elections. Three of the four cases, there were non-incumbents elected, Saratoga, Campbell, and Montserratino. The other thing I wanted you to, let's keep with this, Steve, one more thing, and talk about the finance part. So I have in blue the average spent for each of the four races here, and in the boxes, you can see that in some cases expenditures were really quite high. For example, in Saratoga, there were two people who spent about $40,000 for their campaign, total expenditures, which to us seems like quite a lot for a city council race in the cities of our size. And also, you can see some at lower levels, and then some ranging down to, for example, in Montserratino, much less spending. The majority of candidates spending less than the $2,000 reporting limit for detailed expenditures. So sorry to summarize, incumbents have advantage of, of course, no surprise, newcomers are elected in three of the four races. They have a chance in this area. There's a wide variation in campaign spending. And also, I might mention that there is increase, there was from 2016 to 2018, there was an increase in the expenditure for every city race, and it ranged from about 80 percent increase in the case of Saratoga and also Montserratino, although you were talking, starting from a very low base. And then it was like 6 percent for Campbell and 13 percent for Los Gatos. But the combination of some candidates spending quite a large sum and the increase is, causes some concern in terms of trying to make this accessible for new people to come into the race. Okay, now, in the next slide, I'd like to talk about some of our findings that we identified as best practices. I hope you can hear me okay. I'm not paying attention to the microphone. I hope that's okay. And really, the whole purpose of these, as I mentioned, was to encourage greater election participation and transparency of elections. The first one is to consider the merits of contribution limits or voluntary campaign spending limits. Let me give you some information about that. There are four cities in Santa Clara County that have spending limits. They range from $250 for Melopetus and up to $750 for San Jose in their district elections. Also, there are six cities that have voluntary expenditure limits. As you know, one can't set a limit on spending unless it's accepted by the candidate, but you can have, you can suggest voluntary expenditure limits and then make perhaps some benefits to doing that, which I'll talk about in a moment. But of those six cities, the spending limits range for voluntary range from $14,000 for Palo Alto up to, let's see, $40,500 now for Santa Clara. So, sorry, I forgot that for a moment. So there's a fair range, and that has gained some acceptance. We think it's good because by trying to hold down the cost, you may encourage some people who would resist having to raise a lot of money to run for city council. The second bullet here on posting candidate election contribution and expenditure reports on the web. You may know these well, like Form 460 and so forth. That form, if you raise over $2,000 for your campaign, lists both your total spending as well as your contributions individually, who gave, where they live, their employment or employer, and how much. And so that's a way, we think that is a good, if there is something going on that seems anomalous, or it seems like someone's spending a very large amount of money, you're seeing flyers everywhere as such, you might want to ask, well, what's going on? Why is there a large infusion of money? Is a candidate just spending their own money, or is there someone from down LA pushing housing or something else here in our community? And we think having it on the web is a very efficient way. So in the middle of fishing, you know, at 10 o'clock, you can say, hey, I saw this in the news. I'd like to see what the candidates are spending there, and you could see it. But now, since the 2016 election, Los Gatos has adopted this being posted. Now, that's a service. It costs some money, but it would also be possible to just post the actual forms, for example, 460, on one's website if they wanted to. We think that's a good thing in terms of transparency. Okay? And I would note that, in fact, 10 other cities in addition to Los Gatos has this, does that posting throughout Santa Clara County. So it's rather prevalent. The third bullet, I'll just move quickly then, is a suggestion that we think it's good to cover a portion of the cost of the candidate's statement for the voter information pamphlet. See, the number is wrong there. It's 200 words for Montserratino, and that's $1,493 in a 2018 election that had to be paid for the candidate's statement. The reason we think this is important to have a candidate's statement is that we have found that voters often misunderstand if the candidate doesn't have a statement. They think, well, they didn't care enough to actually put one up. But in fact, for a new candidate who has to pay that almost at the same time as you pay your filing fee, it may be a rather financially challenging thing to decide to put that money upfront. Now, some places, like Campbell, has, if the candidate pays $300, they pay the balance. In our local Saratoga Union Elementary School District, for many years now, they have paid half the fee, and they, in fact, started that, the councilor told me last week, because they were having trouble getting candidates to run for their school board. And so this helped, in fact. And I think the best example is Mountain View, where they have coupled the fact that they will pay after the first 500, they'll pay the balance if the candidates accept a voluntary expenditure limit. Now, there were five candidates in the 20, or six in the 2018 election in Mountain View, and four of them spent very close to their voluntary limits of $25,500, which is a fairly reasonable amount of money, and two of them spent less than that. So it had the effect of, you're destroying your equipment, sorry. It had the effect of holding down the campaign expenses. So we think that was an interesting example. The last point is, we encourage you to continue to enhance your website for well-organized, relevant election information. We're encouraging all cities to do this. I would commend you that you have a very good campaign candidate's guide, which you have available, which the city clerk has done, and we think that's great. But it would be possible, for example, to just list on your website, who are the candidates? What's their statement? Where could I contact them? Things like that. Or you could even put down Voter's Edge, which is a way to find what your ballot looks like and look at information on all the candidates running in the given election. So we think these are four things that might be useful to do. I didn't say anything about term limits yet. I could just mention that briefly, and that's the very last thing I would mention from our study. As you know, they've become rather popular. 11 of the 15 cities in Santa Clara County have term limits. They range, and term limits range from two terms up to four, so from eight years to 16 years. The League of Women Voters neither takes a position that one should or shouldn't have term limits, but just as a point of discussion within the community, we think is good for councils to have. For example, I would mention that a three-year, a three-term, which is 12 years, kind of strikes a balance, in our view, between bringing in new people and new ideas, but keeping some seasoned experts, let's say, who may be pushing through some longer-term plans, and this, of course, depends on the city, but that's one way to think about it. This last 2018 election, nine cities in California voted to impose term limits. In fact, those elections all passed, and they passed between 55 and 87 percent. And there were three cities that voted on reversing, removing term limits, and those elections, everyone failed. So as you can tell, it's a very popular thing in California, and if you put it up for election, you better be sure you want it, because it's likely to pass. So then, that completes the study. Our action chair, this Eleanor Yick, and my co-sponsor for this study, Dennis Picrow, are here, and she was the legislator, so we work together on understanding these things. I just did want to invite you, a special invitation to a reception that the League of Women Voters is putting on at the Los Gatos Town Council Chambers. It's on our 100th anniversary, a historic photo exhibit, which takes every decade and puts down information on what were the key things going on in that decade, whether the pushes, what, how the League of Women Voters were involved in that. And it's, we'd just love to have you join us between 6:00 and 7:30 for some refreshments and snacks on March 5th, a Thursday, a couple weeks. So thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for that presentation. It was very informative and helpful, and we will consider your recommendations.
Yeah, thank you so much. I think the League of Women Voters is playing a tremendous role in our election process. Please keep up the good work. Thank you so much.
Good to see everyone. All right, moving on, oral communications. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on items on the agenda? Fill out a speaker card. You each have three minutes. We will start with Eliana Yick.
Good evening. You're kind of being deluged by the League of Women Voters tonight, but I hope you'll bear with us. My name is Eleanor Yick, and I'm a community member here and a member of the local League of Women Voters. And I'm here tonight to talk about two important events, one of which has already started, and the other will start very soon. The first one regards the implementation of the Voters' Choice Act. I hope all of you have already received your vote-by-mail ballot. You know that this is a new process, starting in Santa Clara County, this election, and with our county joining the others, now over 50 percent of the voters in California will be participating in the elections by vote-by-mail. And I think you all know that this is something that I'm proud of as a resident of California, being that I think we really are working to provide more access to people to vote, rather than the opposite of what we see in many states that are trying to prevent people from voting. And so I think the vote-by-mail is a wonderful step in the right direction. You can mail your ballot back, you can drop it off in a secure mailbox, or you can go to a vote center. And people say, well, why have a vote center? First of all, there won't be local polling places anymore, which is the big change and biggest glitch that many counties have run into on Election Day. Many people go to their polling center that they've gone to for 20 years and discover it's not there anymore, no matter how much it's been advertised. So we're hoping by speaking to it tonight, you become an ambassador, plus the people in the audience, to let people know that your local place, your local polling place no longer exists, but if you want to go to a vote center, you can. You can find a list in your voter pamphlet. You can look it up on the Register of Voters website. Some of those vote centers will be open for 11 days. That's 10 days before the election and Election Day. The nearest one that I saw recently was at West Valley College. Others will be open for four days. That's three days before the election and Election Day. And the one that I saw recently was at the Los Gatos Lodge, and I'm sure that list has been updated since I last looked at it. So we would like to request, this is something the League is strongly promoting, and we'd like to request your working with us by speaking about it, or if you send out internal communications or email notices to your residents to just highlight again that you all should have received your vote-by-mail ballot by now. If you haven't, you should contact the Register of Voters and to let them know so that you can get one. The second item I wish to highlight tonight is the upcoming Census 2020. Again, the League is intensely involved in this effort and working with many partners, including the Santa Clara County Office of Education, to ensure a complete count. All residents are encouraged to participate because it impacts how much federal funding our state receives, our representation in the House of Representatives, and redistricting. Santa Clara County is one of the 10 highest under-counted counties in California. So the League has worked diligently with the Register of Voters going into those areas that are recognized as being difficult to count. So again, thank you for listening, and I hope, again, you will become one of the ambassadors to encourage people to participate in the census. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Rupa Shikhar and Vasu.
Hello, councilmembers. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to kind of voice our opinions. With regards to the 18240 Dave's Avenue, okay, so with, is it okay? All right. So with regards to the 18240 Dave's Avenue Resolution Plan, we kind of found that there is still a discrepancy in terms of the total square footage area mentioned in the resolution plan. We just want to make sure that there are no further discrepancy in the square footage. I also kind of forwarded the appraisal report that was forwarded to us by one of the previous residents. And also on page two, A6D, they, it says that the accessory structure will also include a basement. We did not see a basement in the plan, so we're not sure as to where that is coming from. And again, this is to call out the discrepancies in the report. And talking to Peter, I know that he's still interested in making some modification. He's still working on the final details and the final plan. So our opinion and suggestion is that it's better for Peter to kind of finalize all the entire plan before proceeding with any additional structure, so that it does not pose additional constraints to finalizing the design plan of the future homes they have. So that is what our concern is, just want to kind of report out there. And some of the residents who reached out to us, wanted, they're interested in maintaining the historical structure the way as is, so we're just kind of passing on the message from them onto the city council members here.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Peter Gold.
Hi, thank you. First off, I would like to mention, and I was asked to mention that when I purchased the property, the property was historically eligible. So I really loved the property when I purchased it and wanted to fix the main structure, but one of the processes that I wanted to follow and follow through with is filing for historic preservation. So I did so during 2017, as was previously mentioned, when I, it was approved by the city at that time. The paperwork that was originally available to file with the County of Santa Clara wasn't complete. And so when I went down to the county, they asked me to come back to the city, and then I had to come back through the process again. And when I had to come back through the process again, it was during the holiday time when the city was closed, and I didn't have the opportunity to file by the end of the year, which made me wait another year for the tax implication. And so I lost out on about $14,000, I guess, in tax advantage, which is used, as you know, to preserve the historic structure. So I just wanted to bring that out to the council's attention. Secondly, I'd like to mention that site and architecture did complement my architect on the design that openly in the open meeting that was originally presented. When I did find out that my neighbors objected to the property, I did attempt to make some changes to accommodate them, including redesign, some minor redesign, I'll grant that, and including, as they suggested, putting screening plants, which cost me about $4,000, between the two properties. Now, I have had the opportunity, as you know, to meet with several of the council members, and I do understand, I think now, the extra steps that I need to take to accommodate my neighbor. And I'd like to make a request, but before I do that, I realize that, including me, you know, that the individual's property is a sensitive matter, and I feel extremely uncomfortable with some of the statements that I believe are false, that are being portrayed through email even today and at the council meeting last time. I'd really like to figure out a way that differences can be resolved, and I understand some cities have mediators. My neighboring property is doing unpermitted work to their bathroom currently. Their pool is built on top of water main. They previously, you know, had some issues with neighbors with stealing vegetation and plants and fruit, and, you know, I just, I don't want to have that type of relationship with my neighbor. So with all due respect, what I would like to request is the opportunity to bring my project back to site and architectural for a redesign that would accommodate both my neighbor and myself. And I did speak with city planning, and city planning has mentioned to me that in the past, accommodation had been made to applicants to either, for a lot of time, to do a redesign work or to reapply and waive fees, and I've asked for your consideration in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, written communications. Just received this from Rupa Shikhar. Moving on to consent calendar, are there any items on the consent calendar a council member would like to pull?
May I?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Turner.
Yes, I think I wanted to pull the property in question here in 18240 Dave's Avenue. I think that's item five.
Pull number five.
And save it from here. And the reason I wanted to do that is because I got a request from Peter to actually meet with him, have that opportunity, because I was out in town, and I don't want to get pulled at this point.
Okay.
I guess the discussion went from oral communication. They should have probably discussed it when it got to item five.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna, councilmember Turner would like to pull item five, so I'd like to go ahead and ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item five.
Prove.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar and pull item five?
I have a, I have a councilmember Turner and a second by councilmember Laboue. That would be to approve everything on the consent calendar with the exception of number five. So you should be able to vote. I'm gonna have to read that. The display's not working. Okay, I have all five votes in. Councilmember Alahi voted yes. It passes 5-0. All councilmembers voted yes.
Okay. Then moving on to Then moving on to item five.
Yeah, all I was gonna do...
Councilmember Alahi.
Yeah, all I was gonna do was disclose that I had met with Pete also.
Oh, okay.
That's all that's ever happened to me.
I think we can...
I'm sorry, what did you just say?
I had met with Pete also since the last meeting. I just wanted to disclose that.
I think Mayor Protam and I as well have also met with him since the last meeting.
Yeah, I... Peter has reached out to me, and I have not yet scheduled a meeting yet, but I would like to also, so that's forthcoming.
So, given this resolution, can we postpone it till a following meeting and allow for that meeting to happen?
Certainly. I mean, the council can defer action, but, you know, certainly unless the council wants to take a different action than what was discussed at the prior meeting and the close of the public hearing, I'm not sure that the timing of the meeting is gonna have a significant effect on its action on this particular application.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I would actually... Maybe we could have some discussion? Is that...
Yeah.
Is that okay? Because I'd like to actually revisit this resolution a bit. You know, it seems that the applicant has made clear that he would like to go back to site and architecture. And I would, you know, we had a little bit of confusion last time where I made a motion, and then there was an amendment to the motion and so forth, and I don't know if that exactly went exactly the way I wanted it to. But, you know, in light of sort of current events, I think it would be more prudent if we didn't do this piecemeal, since there's still sort of a, an active initiative on the table, and this is moving forward. So I wonder if we should amend this motion to be, you know, back to my original motion of, you know, deny the application as submitted, and then when the new comprehensive plan comes out, we can consider that as a whole package. Or maybe it doesn't even come here, right? If there's no variances and so forth, it may just only go to site and architecture at that point.
Would you like to convert that to a motion?
Yeah, I... So I'll just read my previous motion, which was move to deny the application as submitted based on vertical mass, visual and privacy impact, lack of incorporating any stepped elements on a prominent hillside, and encroachment of setbacks.
Do we have a second?
And my recommendation is, since you are denying a project, it's usually good to have a resolution denying the project that makes the findings. So I would, I would recommend that you direct staff to come back with a, with a resolution for adoption, making those findings.
Right. And so I'll amend mine to say that this is a move to deny the application as stated, and for staff to come back and with a resolution as such.
We have a second.
Yes, I have a motion by Councilmember Laboue, a second by Councilmember Turner.
I guess I'm confused. We've already discussed this, we've already voted on it last time. We allowed the applicant basically to come up and say that he wanted at least permission to move his garage. So now you're saying you can't do that, just come back completely. I don't know if that's to the advantage of the applicant or not. I'm trying to make it easier for the applicant to move forward, or are we just trying to make it easier for ourselves?
Yes, you can go ahead.
So the applicant stated that he would still like to move forward with some other revised plan, and I think that the city planner is allowing him to do that. You know, I don't know if we have the ability to sort of say, yes, please do so, and waive fees, or... But in granting, you know, my feeling is, in granting the garage now, we're doing things piecemeal, especially if there's more things that are coming back. And so I think that the, you know... So if it were gonna be, go do the garage, and then that's it, and that's a one-and-done plan, but that doesn't appear to be the case. It's gonna come back in some other form incrementally now.
Yeah, but we already did that. Sure.
Councilmember Turner.
Yeah, what I wanted to do here was to actually give Peter the benefit of the doubt and look at this project, not from a piecemeal basis, but really from, you know, one whole project, and put it together thoughtfully, rather than doing this piecemeal. And that was the reason I made a second on this one.
All right, do we have... Can we...
Certainly, the council can act on that motion. I think the one other issue that the council has not deliberated on is the applicant's request for waiver of fees, and if the council would like to offer that, it would be helpful for us to know, so we can put that in the resolution.
I think we should offer him, we should offer that.
Well, and I just want to bring back the comments related to piecemeal. The proposal for the accessory structure, I think, as stated at the last meeting, the likelihood of any addition going on that area would not be found in conformance with the Secretary of Interior Standards. So therefore, even the architect and the property owner are not looking to capture that area for an addition to the home. Just a accessory structure in and of itself would not require a special use permit. So, I mean, I think that's where you all, others came to the motion of the minimum allowing that accessory structure. Whether he moves forward on that or not, you know, immediately is up to him, but that is something that can go independent of an addition to the historic structure.
Yes, by Councilmember Laboue.
So I did visit the site and look, and I think learned a lot from that. And I know that two of our council members haven't had that opportunity yet. But relating to this subject of the possibility of expanding that direction, I think that the city planner's comment was correct, which is there's no possibility and no interest in expanding towards where that accessory garage would be. So that's, if we allow it to go forward and build there, that's not blocking a solution for the owner, and he stated that, that he's not going that direction. And the house is not designed such that it would make any sense to. The problem is with the kitchen, the kitchen's on the extreme other end of the house. So I don't have any problem, again, kind of looking to the homeowner. If he wants to go forward with that accessory structure, it's not gonna get in the way of us approving something else. If we're not gonna approve something else, it's gonna be on the merits of that other project. But the garage does need to go up near the house, the turnaround needs to be fixed. But I have one additional comment, and that is regarding that second tree. It is a sickly, twisted, useless tree, and so I want to add back in to the removal of that second tree. It is in the way, PG&E wants it gone, and the tree itself has no redeeming value. And I say that, I don't say that lightly, because I love trees, but that tree is not one that is doing any good for anyone. And I'm sure the homeowner's going to do something else elsewhere on the property that's going to more than make up for that. In fact, he's already planted huge screenings along there and added a lot of greenery. So I'd like to add, when we have the opportunity, I'd like to amend, if we are gonna go forward on this, to add back that second tree and then allow that project to go forward.
All right, thank you for your comments. Councilmember Laboue, are you willing to amend?
Well, why don't we, why don't we not get into that again? And why don't we take it?
I think in the interest of keeping it simple for everyone, perhaps we should, we should present the project all as one. I think perhaps that's the idea behind this motion, is so that you can come back with everything as one piece instead of individual pieces.
You know, I really don't get it. I mean, we've done a motion, we approved something, we're going back and rehashing stuff, we have other things on the plate. I'd like to hear from the homeowner what he wants to do. Do you want to do the whole project as one big project, or are you happy with at least being able to move your accessory unit at this time? If you could come up and share your thoughts on it, because we're basically trying to not, not put additional burdens on you, trying to help you out a little bit.
No, I appreciate it.
But it's up to you, it's up to you what you want to do.
And just so it's said, the, there is a, on the existing plans that have been presented, there is a storage unit underneath the garage. The way the, for those of you that have had the opportunity to drive onto the driveway, you can tell it's kind of hard to turn around in there. You know, and I am anxious to, to add that accessory structure, so that I can in fact turn around more easily and have a garage that's accessible. But I'm just as happy to do the whole project as, as, as one. But I guess I'm a little indifferent, but I was happy with that at least I walked away with something last time. So if I still had that, I guess, I guess that would be my preference, is to still have the garage and, and then work over a finite period of time with site and architecture to come back with something that's fully supported.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we still have a motion, and we have a second? Can we take it to a vote? Okay, we should be able to vote.
So I have all votes in. Councilmember Alahi voted no, Councilmember Laboue, yes, Councilmember Turner, yes, Mayor Protam Lutherhold, yes, and Mayor Laller, yes. So it passes four to one.
So staff coming back with a new resolution next meeting?
Staff will be coming back with a new resolution next meeting, and if, as I'm looking at the head nods at me, that resolution should also include a waiver of planning fees. Okay, that's the direction that I have.
All right, moving on.
Should we put a limit on how long that is good for, the waiver of planning fees?
I think that's...
Does that make a difference?
I'll defer to the city planner on that one.
Generally, it's been put out there to give an applicant six months. Some jurisdictions will do a year. So it's really dependent on the complexity of the project, what you all think.
Yeah, I think you should put some, some limits on it, so that we can keep track of it.
Let's move on. No public hearings, no unfinished business, moving on to new business.
Did you decide a timeframe?
A timeframe for...
I think a year is probably reasonable.
Isn't that the normal, a year from the time they apply?
She said six months.
It's six months or a year. It's been seen as being a year.
I'd say a year would probably be. Yeah. All right, sorry, thank you. All right, new business, item number seven. Annual financial report for the year ended in, on June 30th, 2019. Mr. Leonardi, would you like to speak about this?
Thank you, Mayor. We have our auditor here this evening, who's been waiting to present or answer any questions.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me. My name is Tarek Radwan, the Audit Manager in Charge with IBALE, the CPA firm, the city's external, internal order, I mean, financial order. We conducted the audit for the year end, June 30, 2019. The scope of the audit is to provide a reasonable assurance that the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects and in compliance with generally accepted accounting standards and the government accounting standards. The statements are the responsibility of the management. We performed our audit back in October of last year, where we performed various tests and other procedures to obtain audit evidence about the amounts and disclosures in the financial statements, as well as we gained an understanding of the internal controls on the major operation cycles, such as cash receipts, cash disbursements, payroll, and purchasing. We confirmed all significant financial statement balances, such as the cash and investments, property taxes, receivables, and other revenues. Also, we assisted in drafting the financial statements and the footnotes in compliance with the accounting standards and the government, governmental accounting standards. At the conclusion of the audit, we issued an audit opinion report stating whether the financial statements are fairly stated, and also whether we noted any deficiencies in the internal controls or any instances of non-compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements. We also issued a U.C. 260 letter addressed to the city council, which is intended to provide to those charged with governance information about internal control weaknesses encountered during the audit. And I'm pleased to let you know that we issued clean opinions in all these aspects, which means the city's financial statements are fairly stated, and no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses were noted in the internal controls, and no management letter comments were needed during our audit process. With that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Alahi.
Yeah, I know you've discussed the pension issues, but I get confusing numbers. I mean, I've heard we don't have any unfunded pensions, and then I've heard that we have $600,000 of unfunded pension liability. Which is it?
Actually, the pension liability now is, I think it's 400-something, for it's in Page 10. It's 408, 507. So basically, it's, has been reduced since last year. I believe last year it was 513. So because you guys, a couple of years ago, you paid a chunk of money, that one lump sum payment of about $600,000, that's gonna reduce the, the future payments, and your liability will be decreasing by time.
Yeah, I'm looking at your analysis, I think it was on page 40, where you're showing what the amount determined is for pension and how much we paid, and that seemed to be all zeroed out. So if you can help me understand why there's a difference between 2015 and 19, we seem to be paying all our liabilities, and yet we still have a $400,000 liability. And I understand one time you had completely paid it off.
The liability is, if you notice, in the, in the page 39, the liability is moving down, toward down. And when you paid, in 2017, when you paid that lump sum payment, supposedly it should reduce to, like, your liability like almost in half. But what made bump, what made, what the, bumped the, the liability back up is the reduction in the discount rate. If you notice, in the discount rate, which is the third line from the bottom, it was, in 2015, was 7.5, and then it started to reduce to 7.15 in 2018. So that's bumped the liability up. And basically, this is an actual assumption, we had no control on it. It's determined by CalPERS, the California Post-Employment Agency.
Yeah, no, the statement I heard was that we had completely paid our unfunded liability. So that was an incorrect statement at that time.
And it's, it's not 100% accurate, because the, the liability is reassessed every year by the, the CalPERS Actuary, and they change the assumptions every year. So as you may, as you may notice here, the discount rate made a big change when it has been reduced to 7.15.
And is there a way, I mean, is it better for us to pay this thing completely off again, because the return we get on our funds is almost nothing? And is this, is this hurting us more?
It's a management and city council decision, we have no say on that. I see some agencies, they decided to pay it off, some agencies decide to just pay it on installment, like, as it goes.
I'm talking from an investment perspective. I mean, are we paying a higher interest rate to them because we have an unfunded liability?
Yeah, it will save money, definitely. When you, when you pay lump sum, like, big amounts, it's, you are paying less interest for the future.
And what's the difference? What's the interest that we are paying them for the unfunded liability?
The interest is, I don't have the number now, but it's, you have a liability of $400,000. So I would say...
Know what the rate is?
The interest rate, it's, I think, 7.65.
That we're paying them on the $400,000?
Yeah.
And the money that we have in the bank, we're only getting what, 1% or less?
Yeah, sort of, yeah. It's, it's life. I usually give like, less than 1%, and maybe 1.1%.
All right.
Mayor Protam Lutherhold, any questions?
No questions.
Councilmember Laboue.
I'll dig into these a little more. I'm not, you know, so I'm also looking at, and I'm sure you saw, the, the CalPERS report from July 2019, which was supposed to be for years 20 and 21. And in this report, it says that we have unfunded liabilities of $613,000.
Which, is that in the financial report?
It's not your financial report, it's, it's the CalPERS report of our plan, so it's our plan report for this. But I'm not sure, I just have never been quite sure how, how these numbers flow through this...
Yeah.
Flow through, you know, your, this P and L statement.
The basic, like, it's sort of a little bit complicated, because we have three dates. We have the valuation date, we have measurement date, and we have reporting date. So what is in the financial statements is the, the, the liability as of reporting date.
So this is, this is how much liability you've recognized today? So our plan is projected?
It's valued, valued as of December 31st, I mean, June 31st, June 30, 17.
17.
Yeah.
Okay, so that makes the number a little bit closer, because this, the CalPERS report is reporting on, from June 30, 2017, as four thirty, oh forty-eight.
Correct.
So that's, you know, within 25K or something like that. Whereas, but when they project this forward to June 30, 2018, which is, you know, 2018 already passed, we're at six thirteen, so.
Yeah.
So this is a revenue recognition item. So the other question is about this, the post-employment piece, where you're saying that there's 857K versus a liability sitting here. I'm looking at page six.
You have the eight fifty-seven?
Ah, yes.
Okay.
Is there-
So this is related to the GASB seventy-five, the post-employment liability that has been, went in effect starting June 30, 18. So I think this is the second year the city has it. Previously, the post-employment liability, it was just a disclosure in the financial statement. I mean, the financial report, it was not showing in the financial statement. But starting in June 30, 18, the governmental accounting standards be pushed or enforced to show the liability in the financial statements. And they implemented, all the local agencies need to implement GASB seventy-five. So the liability is determined by a city actuary, Mr. John Bartel. And I think the management provide all the census data, and based on the census data, he determined the liability.
So is this a, is this a number that is, it's basically money owed, though, isn't it?
Yeah, but it's not due tomorrow. It's due over-
Over the lifetime, over the retirement lifetime of employees.
So when people start retiring, you guys, this liability should start reducing.
But, so are there any reserves against this money? So I see, I mean, we have deferred outflows and deferred inflows, and I would expect to see-
Yeah, actually, the liability, OPEB liability, is unfunded. You guys have no reserve for that.
No reserve.
Yeah.
So, but, but these are monies that will be, need, will be owed, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so that, that's not good.
It's an estimate, it's not accurate, it's an estimate, yeah.
It's a rolling forward, that is a money, that is a sum that we will have to pay.
But we believe this number will grow in the future.
Okay, so just, just from my understanding, so there's two things. So there's the post-employment, so these are people that are off the payroll, and these are sums of money that we will owe over their, course of their retirement. And then there's the net liabilities, the net pension liabilities. This is for employees that are currently employed, but projecting forward as in terms of we are, we haven't paid enough to cover their full amount yet.
Correct, yes.
That's correct, okay.
So in any case, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Councilmember Turner.
I think I have a little more understanding, but I'm just trying to reconcile these two. So this report is now, I guess, these numbers are 2019, yet the CalPERS number of six thirteen was as of 30, 2018 also? So which numbers did-
Our financial statement is valued as of June 30, 17.
Oh, seventeen, okay. Yet, yet this is an audit for nineteen.
Yeah, the audit day on nineteen, but if you go to the pension footnote, CalPERS, we are sticking to the actual report issued by CalPERS, and they are always two years behind.
Oh, so it's a two-year lag.
They value, they take like time to value all the assets and liabilities, and then they issue a report one year behind.
Okay, so it's a two-year lag. So what I'm suspecting happened with the previous city council where they tried to pay this off, they probably picked up a number that was two years old. And therefore, there's a, there's a gap between what is the most current number versus what they tried to pay off, thinking that that was the current number. And, and also, the rate changed, right? And that was a big one also.
Correct, yeah, that's, yeah, that, a play game.
Yeah, so, and also, you know, it also said that they changed some of the calculations also in terms of the way things are annuitized, right? So that was also changed. So there's really kind of three things in play affecting these numbers.
Are you, Councilmember Turner?
I'm finished, sorry, yes, thank you.
Are you sure?
Yes. I was just trying to, I've been trying to wrap my head around this for a long time.
So if we were to summarize what you guys were just talking about, we should actually be looking at the $600,000 figure and not necessarily the four hundred and eight.
Oh, which six hundred?
So if we wanted to pay this fully down,
Oh.
we would have to go two years forward.
Two years before.
I would recommend that you contact CalPERS.
CalPERS are bogus.
We have the most current number now, because this number's changing from year to year based on their actual studies.
Yeah, okay, okay, I understand that now.
Like, I think three years ago, when the city decided to pay off, they received a letter from CalPERS, it says exactly how much they are owing, and based on that, they paid the bill.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Sure, you're welcome.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Alahi has one more question.
No problem, sure.
I just want to get this figured out once and for all, if possible, at all. So, I mean, you call it total other post-employment benefits payable. So when you say other, it means pension, or it doesn't mean pension?
No, so to make it easy, the pension is as if like the salary, but for the retired person. So pension replaced the salary for the retired person. The other employment benefits replace the medical benefits for the retired person.
So this is the medical insurance that we are supposed to carry, or some other? What are the benefits, are they besides medical, is it that way?
Medical, dental, and, yeah.
And there's also a COLA wrapped up into this also.
Or interim benefits? Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
One more, one more.
I just wanted to point out one thing. On page three, it was actually kind of a surprise to me that we actually spent more than we took in by like 700K in this fiscal, fiscal nineteen, which, I know in the last budget, we, you know, we were positive, but I think that that had to do more with hacienda. I think we just have to be very careful about this. This is, you know, the fact that we spent 700K more in expenses than we had in revenue, I don't think that's a great look for us from fiscal prudence perspective.
Where was the biggest of that spend?
I don't know, I'd have to go back and dig through the, well, previous budget, so.
I think that's pavement management.
Yeah, it might be, yeah.
Yeah, the biggest chunk I noticed this year, it was the pavement management, and also there was a road project in Blanchard-
Yeah, yeah.
Drive, yeah. It was about like 1.2 million dollars spent on there.
So that was conscious choice, that we chose to spend down the general fund to go do the pavement. But, yeah, that's, should be the exception, not the rule.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, you're welcome. Thank you.
At this point, do you need a motion to-
See if there's anybody from the public who-
Oh, absolutely. Is anyone from the public like to speak about this study? Should I ask for a motion to accept this financial study? The annual financial report for the year ended June 30, 2019.
I have a motion by Councilmember Turner and a second by Councilmember Alahi. Lay working, you should be able to vote. Okay, all votes are in, and the motion passes five zero.
Moving on, item number eight, pavement management program fiscal year status report. We'll have Ms. Khan give us the report. The presentation for this one.
Quick break?
I'm sorry, I think we've had a request for a quick minute, a couple minute break. Do you mind?
Yep.
All right. All right. If it's okay with council, we're going to, we're going to switch item eight and item nine to allow discussion about the fence height regulations first. So I would like to ask Brian Mekachuk to come up and speak on item nine. Or, or, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, never mind. We'll give you a chance to give us a staff report, Jeanne, how's that?
That's fine. So my staff report really is just presenting to you kind of the general research I put together for immediately surrounding cities relative to their fence height regulations on residential properties. If you look at the matrix, it's generally consistent with respect to fence height within the front yard areas, three feet. They're very, anywhere from six feet to seven feet. And I think Javed requested what the county does, and they do allow eight feet. Those properties that are in the county pockets within Monte Sereno are zoned R1E. So they have the three feet within the front, 20 feet of their properties, and then eight feet on the side and rear. So it's really, I think, you know, council's discussion relative to what direction they want to send staff off in further researching. There are cities that have codified exceptions. Some of those exceptions are based on objective situations. Some yield to the discretion of the planning director or require some sort of hearing. I'll be more than happy to share my experience, if asked, on what direction is preferable given staffing and resources and stuff.
Okay, thank you. Any council member questions at this time?
Well, I guess you should ask, you say your comments. That would help.
So I, it's always easier when you're dealing with something that, in essence, you don't need a building permit for. I mean, the seven-foot height in certain jurisdictions mimics what is allowed without a building permit right now. So if you go over seven feet, you're going to need a building permit. That's my understanding. Also-
And I'll pull up the building code. There's, I believe it's six feet with a one-foot lattice is exempt from building permit.
Yeah, I think cities have interpreted that to be seven feet, because lattice isn't any less of a structure than, you know, board stuff. A lot of cities do require that top foot to be more open in nature or have a certain percentage of openness. Good luck having somebody demonstrate that or show how they demonstrate that. And also, not all lattice is created equal, so you're going to have a real variation of looks. But if that's not an issue, then it's not an issue. Some people want a higher fence height for privacy, and they don't feel that that lattice really affords that privacy. But getting back to kind of the exceptions that some cities have, and I, it can get pretty complex. I didn't really detail it out that much here, but there is that column. You can go a few different ways. You can literally codify when you can be accepted up to a certain height if you're on a, you know, located in a certain area or along a major thoroughfare or things like that. Other exceptions require the discretion of the planning department or the director of planning, which basically, that always kind of gets yielded to staff. One of the issues when you put that on a case-by-case basis, that can change over time, depending on who's sitting in what chair or behind what desk, as to, you know, well, this makes sense or this makes sense. So if you want real consistency, the closer you can get to objective standards, I think the better off a community is and the ease of implementation and ease of understanding from a property owner standpoint. Because again, these are things that people are not going to require a building permit for.
And just to verify, in the 2019 building code, it's seven feet that are exempt. The lattice fence was from the 2016 building code, so that's not the current standard anymore.
So to clarify, so are you allowed to have, so like, for example, Saratoga in your columns that has this two-foot extension of lattice, are, does that require a building permit, or no?
It would if it's over seven feet per building code, because that's the California building code.
So, I mean, there's a distinction between zoning standards, meaning what you're allowed to build, and then building code standards, which say you can build it, but then you have to go and get prior review and permitting.
So the California building code is seven feet, but the county has an eight-foot require, allow?
You can go up to eight feet, yeah. But if you're going over what the building code would allow without a permit, you'll need to get a building permit. So again, there's a confusion sometimes when, you know, as a property owner, again, you know, I don't need a building permit for a fence up to seven feet. Well, but they allow me eight feet, so they might assume that that means. So you're going to have to be really clear if you go beyond what you would otherwise be able to do without a building permit.
So the county requires a building permit if they want to go eight feet?
They would.
The state requires the county to require a building permit.
So, so the assumption is, yes, people who take advantage of that eight-foot height should be getting building permits for those eight-foot high fences. If they bring it down to seven per their California State Building Code, they don't require a building permit.
I suspect that building code is just a rubber stamp thing, somebody goes in and applies for eight feet in the county and they give it to them.
You know, I, there are some districts that, depending on the height, you need some design review, even if you go up to eight, but maybe-
So the building permits-
They probably look at the footings, because eight feet means you're going to have to have some structural support. So you're not just going to be able to say, I want a fence of eight feet. You're going to have to submit something to show structural, because that's why they're requiring a building permit. So you're going to have to go down a certain distance, probably.
And, you know, typically, for building permits, it's a ministerial approval as long as you show that it's buildable according to building code standards. But for, if you have something like a design review that's imposed for a fence over a certain height, then you have, you know, things that can be required, like aesthetic design preferences and things like that, so. Likely not something that a lot of jurisdictions do, I assume.
No.
All right, then, can I open it up to public comment? And the council recognizes Brian Mekachuk. All right, thank you.
Thank you, first of all, for moving the order. Thanks. I just wanted to say a couple of things. I would like to ask Monte Sereno to direct staff to draft a fence ordinance that is substantially similar to LaScatos. We're right adjacent LaScatos, and if you look at the perimeter, we're not a rectangle. We're, we've got all kinds of different pockets, and so it makes it very confusing. And plus, we've got the county in there. LaScatos spent a tremendous amount of time on developing their ordinance, and they were initially going to be very prescriptive, and if you think of writing an algorithm for a fence, if this, then this, whatnot. And then they, after, and Steve knows this better than anyone, because he sat in all of the council meetings, that they finally went to something where it was more general and then giving latitude to the director of community planning, because they decided that they just couldn't get into being prescriptive in every instance. I believe strongly that the fence ordinance would help with a number of issues, particularly privacy, but it also has to do with noise and with safety. And I think the LaScatos Monte Sereno PD would say that a six-foot fence is easier to scale than a seven-foot fence, and they kind of get up exponentially. Just as a couple of side points, I own a property in LaScatos and around the swimming, we had a tree that fell down and we had to rebuild the fence. And because a new house was built behind our swimming pool there, what we did was, we applied for an eight-foot fence. And it, we had to identify what the fence was going to be, what the materials were going to be, how it was going to be finished. And then also structurally, generally, if you go up eight feet, you have to go down four feet, so whatever you go up, half of that is down. And they had a- And they had us take the plan and then have every adjacent neighbor sign off on it. So it forced that interaction. And all the neighbors were like, no prob, you know? The only question comes up is who's going to pay for it? So, no. And the other thing is, is that in terms of fences and lattices, there, you don't want to have a wall. You want to have something that visually breaks it up with horizontal lines and vertical lines. You don't want to have a straight vertical line that's, that's six feet or seven feet. My other comment is on the building permit. It sounds very complicated, having a building permit. And we had to pay $250 or whatever and get a building permit in La Scatos. And that's easy. And the final sign-off on the building permit is the inspector comes out with a measuring tape, and he measures it, and the plan said it was going to be eight feet, and he measured it. He measured it, and it was, it was the width of a two-by-four too high, because the contractor didn't account for the two-by-four. So he said, I can't sign off on this, it's trivial. And so the contractor had to come back and cut off an inch and a half, two inches. So anyways, that's, the permitting is very simple. If I could say one final thing on permitting, that under the prior building code, if you had a fence that was six feet tall, you didn't need a permit under the building code. Then the building code changed, and it increased to seven feet. So you can now have a fence that's seven feet tall without a building permit. If the fence is over seven feet, then you have to get a permit under the building code. So, I don't know if you have any questions or-
Any questions?
What's the ask? Are you asking for seven, seven feet solid or six plus one lattice?
So, so the, so what it is in La Scatos is it's seven feet, including six feet with one foot of lattice, right? So visually, it's broken up, so it doesn't look like it's a wall, okay? Adjacent community, or sorry, commercial properties, it should be, it's allowed to be eight feet with the, your neighbors signing off on that. I'm not dealing with the front yard. That's, I'm, I'm good with the, the front yard. I'm just the, the side yard and the rear yard. So the, the ask is six foot plus one lattice or in, against commercial spaces, eight feet with the neighbors approving it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then.
I, I, thank you for bringing, bringing that up and your experience in La Scatos, and I think Steve can probably share more of that, I suppose. I, and I am also taking Jeanie's comment about what is a lattice and what kind of lattice do you want. And I, I think we should just go with a seven-foot height on the fences and not concern ourselves with whether there's a one-foot lattice or not a one-foot lattice.
I mean, I can share my experience living in a community that allows seven-foot-high fences, and I had one that went from six to seven. That wasn't a perceptual difference, quite honest. I think once you get beyond that, you know, the eight to nine to 10-foot, then it's pretty tall. So, just, again, from my experience, I know from an aesthetic, sometimes communities want that, you know, difference in that top foot between six and seven. I'm not seeing a lot of need for it as far as taking away some perception of a real wall, because seven feet is still, you know, there are a lot of six-foot, some people walking around, so they're, you know, think of that, and then what, a little bit more is seven feet, that's, tends to be, you know, accepting along a, a property line.
If I may, most of the fences I've seen actually have that lattice. And to Brian's point, it's very important to have that seemingly more open for aesthetics. It, I can see if you're on a smaller lot and you have a seven-foot fence that you're staring at, I mean, just for your neighbor's perspective, I think it's, it's a neighborly thing to do, to have that lattice, and you can always plant jasmine or potato vine to grow on it and make it look lovely. But I think there, I think aesthetics are very important when you're adding height to someone's fence that they're going to be looking at in your backyard.
You can, if you're going to put a, you know, a standard of a certain percent openness, I'll have to figure out how to, people are going to have to figure out how to present that or demonstrate it when it's questioned, because this will be kind of self-enforcing, because we're not going to go out and, chances are, our staff is not going to go out and proactively assess all these fences and ensure that they are 20% open in nature. But when it is, I don't know how they quote-unquote enforce it in other communities. So, so it will be a self-enforcing standard, because we won't require a permit for it.
I think people will follow it. I think it depends on the type of fence, but typically, if it's a wood fence, then the lattice would work. If it's something other, I think, I just, I think having that as a strong suggestion is helpful. So, any other comments?
So, so I'm just trying to understand your recommendation. So, so seven feet, from, in terms of implementing this code, do, would you recommend that we just say seven across the board, or, or are we trying to encourage one foot of lattice somehow, some way?
I'm not, I mean, at this point, I'm just, I'm not necessarily recommending one way or another. What I'm saying is, you know, in, in what I've seen, six feet versus seven feet is not a huge change, because a lot of people who have pools, they like that additional foot. Not every place where you're allowed to do seven feet do people put up seven-foot fences, because it is more expensive, too. But, you know, if you are going to do seven feet but require that that top foot be lattice from this point on, when people put up that seven feet, because we're, again, it's an enforcement challenge, because we won't know when they're putting it up vis-à-vis this change. And I think, you know, we can put guidelines out there and encourage that this is, you know, something that you can do, but when we're asked to enforce it, it's going to be a challenge.
So, if I'm understanding the planning director correctly, the staff recommendation is a fence up to seven feet in height. Six feet with one foot lattice is fine, as long as it doesn't include, you know, a specific, you know, openness requirement, which is difficult to enforce without prior design review. And it doesn't sound like staff would like to recommend prior design review for fences. And the staff recommendation is to line up with a building permit exemption, generally.
Yeah, the seven feet, yeah. And, and again, whenever you change the fence height allowances, you know, if you get someone complaining about something, we're going to, it's going to be a challenge to figure out when that fence was built and whether it was built prior to, you know, the lattice requirement or not and stuff like that. So.
So, so, I mean, I, having listened to this and, and kind of watched the issue, I think there's, there's a concern if we start, and where I'm going with this is, I think we should put into the good neighbor issue, you should work with your neighbors to clear your fence, to be something that's attractive to them. Lattices are strongly encouraged. Good neighbors and openness is strongly encouraged. But coming to this issue of policing, the issue is, you go and pull a building permit, the building inspector is on your property, and all of a sudden, they say, well, that's a seven-foot fence without lattice, that's non-compliant. It was six feet before, so there's no way that that's compliant with age, and we're going to have to make you do something about that. And then the neighbor's got to go and take the fence down until the building inspector's gone, when they put it back up, because they, they and their neighbor both wanted it that way. So I think, I mean, what I'm hearing from the city planner is, seven feet, encourage people to deal with that appropriately with their neighbors and the design guidelines, but don't make the, the city the police of that, saying, remove this lattice or make this fence shorter. When we get to the exceptions, I think, and I think we should have some exceptions, that people could do an eight-foot fence, and we've got to talk about whether that's something that planning has the discretion to approve or how we deal with that. But again, the issue for me is, if your neighbors are all in agreement that that eight-foot fence is appropriate there, then we should have a smooth process to allow it, because nobody's going to be asking for that without a reason for it. And if they are, and their neighbors agree, because they each have pools that back up on each other, and that's what they want, they can come in and put a building permit, and somebody needs to approve that, because it needs city council approval or not. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner?
Would it be appropriate, then, to say up to seven feet? Change this up to seven feet?
Yeah, I mean, you're not even required to have a fence, period. But you can have a fence up to three feet in your front, up to six feet on your sides and rears now.
Yes.
You would change that to up to seven on the sides and rear.
So then, shall we direct staff to prepare an ordinance reflecting that change and perhaps cite the good neighbor policy in there somewhere?
Yeah, I, I think it's a good suggestion, and to make it simpler for staff, you could take a look at the La Scatos ordinance. I mean, the suggestion was, let's make it, you know, comparable to La Scatos. I don't see a, see a difference between us and La Scatos in this particular area.
I, I think the, the one issue with La Scatos is it requires lattice. I think that it might be just simpler to say up to seven feet and work out with your neighbor whether you want lattice or not.
Yeah. Yeah, and given staff's time and resources, you know, when we, we can put together, you know, we're sure about fencing and the changes, and then you can include, you know, also examples of types of fencing and designs to kind of, you know, put that thought out there. You know, the other thing is, if you put it on your property line, it's a good neighbor fence, and then the whole civil issue comes in. So, again, you know, to the extent that we can put together an educational piece, again, staff resources, when available, we would kind of do something that has all of that. And I think through that educational piece, encourage that. I don't know how we would do that in the ordinance, but that would be more appropriate through like a brochure or a handout related to fencing and give examples of different styles and direction on how to go about doing that.
All right, then, so are you-
Sorry. One more question. I mean, we've, we've heard, we haven't heard from Steve on La Scatos and the experience. And I'm wondering, I, I think that it sounded like Mr. Mekachuk mentioned eight feet was related to, when you back up or side to commercial. Is it, does it make sense for us to be talking about an eight-foot exception or following La Scatos and saying, that's only if you're backing up to commercial or have something else exceptional? I don't know how, how that discussion went and what the suggestion was.
So that is correct. Obviously, Monte Sereno doesn't have any commercial, except a church and a school. So perhaps in the case-
Any adjacent La Scatos.
And adjacent La Scatos commercial properties. So, and then there may be some in the county or whatnot. But if you guys wanted to, council wanted to propose similar to what La Scatos has, where you'd have to get the approval of the neighbors and get a building permit in that instance, I think that would be something you could look at. I think it would be rare in Monte Sereno, but there may be some need for it. The other thing in La Scatos that was a big discussion point was wildlife passage, and they talked about wildlife corridors and how do you allow the deer to move freely in the hillsides? That was perhaps the most, the strongest point of discussion, and that's something we didn't touch on here at all. But that was, you know, when it comes to things like the height, the seven-foot, whether it's lattice or not, that's pretty straightforward.
Do we have in Las, in Monte Sereno, do we have an open space hillsides exceptions? I know La Scatos was talking about that, and I think the county mayor may not have some of that, where it says that fences are either discouraged or blocked in terms of the hillside's wildlife movement?
No, we, you can put a perimeter fence on your property. If you're, I mean, in our design guidelines, but again, fences don't have to come to us. So we do encourage fencing open in nature. When somebody wants to exceed the three-foot height within the front setback or the side corner, and they have to go in front of site and architecture, that's when we can impose that design guideline of a more open in nature. And, and very often, you might get the lower wall, but the open, but that's more for visibility to the front of the home.
And I, just for the council's reference, the definition of wildlife-friendly fence in La Scatos ordinance is a fence that allows an animal to, regardless of size, to climb under, pass through, jump over the fence with a maximum height of 42 inches and a minimum distance between the bottom rail and ground of 18 inches. So basically, it's, you know-
Split-rail fence.
Split-rail fence.
We, we have another problem. If you look at next door, there's always news about coyotes jumping over the fence. So six-foot fence doesn't hold them in, I guess.
So, so just, clarification, so on this other column here where you say pedestrian gateway, so it sounds like we already have the ability to go up to 12 feet with approval. Is that correct? So that's the same as this commercial requirement?
That's just like a little pedestrian arbor thing at the front.
Oh, okay, so that, that's limited, that's not-
Yeah.
So, but in terms of like a pedestrian, like if you're against a pedestrian street or something like that, it's only six feet?
Six feet, mhm.
So I thought I've seen fences much higher than six feet.
No, only, you may have. But the only-
Certainly La Scatos, like, you know, if you're like on Andrews-
Well, I think you can go up to eight feet in La Scatos. In La Scatos, you can in some cases. Again, I think one of the, one of the interests is to make sure that you don't feel like there's this solid wall right up against a sidewalk. So again, you know, do you have a little bit of a buffer to, you know, allow for pedestrian passage without, you know, going like this? You know, if we modified this, everybody could go up to seven. That additional foot, very, very common if you back up to commercial or you side onto commercial to go an additional one to two feet, because there are a lot of other impacts that spill over from that commercial. I'm going to, again, express my opinion about, you know, you only get it if your neighbors at the time like it. You know, we don't have control over our neighbors. You may be a perfectly respectable person, but for whatever reason, you've got a neighbor who is just out there and is going to say no, no matter what. Is that fair? You know, it's, again, it's hard for planning divisions to really deal with those sort of regulations, that it basically says, well, you can have it as long as you can get all your neighbors rallied and say, okay. But if you can't, sorry. Again, hence why I try to, you know, show the value of objective standards that, and just because they're objective standards doesn't mean you haven't considered all these different situations and, you know, codified those meaningful situations and apply the exceptions to those. If you're on a major thoroughfare, if you back, back up or side onto commercial or industrial, things like that. So there, you know, not that I don't like to exercise discretion, I'm fine with it, but again, consistency a lot of times is where you really like to be. And as, as personnel changes over, that's your toughest challenge to maintain that So as objective as you can get, the better off, and really narrow those areas of discretion. So it's really clear.
And, you know, I will say one thing is, if you have more objective standards that provide for less discretion by staff, the easier it is for staff to not only administer, but the more those standards are typically enforceable by the city. And, you know, the city avoids complaints about, you know, discrimination based on who somebody is or, you know, staff unfavorably performing their jobs, you know, or unfairly denying permits based on a discretionary action. So typically not, you know, objective standards are very beneficial in terms of city operation. So.
All right, then, so are we clear? We're going to direct staff to prepare an ordinance with these changes and cite the good neighbor policy? and cite the good neighbor policy?
Up to seven feet.
Up to seven feet.
And are we gonna put an eight-foot exception for-
For commercial.
Commercial.
So basically mirror Los Gatos's in a way?
Look at Los Gatos as an improvement.
With the exception of the requirement for lattice.
For lattice, which I would prefer to have, frankly, but-
Well, again, I think a strong suggestion for that and the idea is good.
I think it also had, if it's neighboring a county property, then you can, because the county can go eight feet, so-
That would be an exception for eight feet, yeah.
Yeah, so then Los Gatos should be able to do that.
That's a good question, because if it's a good neighbor fence, and if the county can, property can go up to eight feet, where, and the property line is county one side, city the other, can that, can they use that eight-foot regulation?
Sure, why not?
I think that would be interesting to ask.
I mean, if they build it, if they build it on the county property, yeah, they certainly could.
Well, but that's, my question is if it's on the property line, which is a good neighbor fence, do you split the difference? I mean, which trumps what?
I think for, I think that this is a good reason why you might want to line up the standards. Because figuring out which jurisdiction has jurisdiction over the fence is certainly, certainly a problematic issue in the real world. And requiring, you know, the city to go out there and pay for a site survey before decides to enforce a seven-foot height limit is-
Yeah, so you don't, yeah, so you can just say if it borders the county, with a permit you can go up to eight foot, otherwise it's seven foot. I mean, just sign the permit.
And I think what we're hearing is we don't want to put in that you have to get your neighbor's approval if you're one of these exceptions.
Right, correct.
Or you can do eight, and then seven, and then eight, and then seven. Make everybody happy.
Okay.
All right, then we are moving on, back to item number eight, pavement management program fiscal year status report. Thank you, Jeanie. Presentation puts on?
Awesome, thank you. All right. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I am pleased to bring you an update on our pavement management report, the status of our pavement in the city, and then also seeking a recommendation for future goals and budget. Prior to, or before getting into the whole presentation, I did want to point out a typo that was on page five of the staff report under scenario four, which was the recommended scenario, staff recommended scenario. In one point, it has 1.39 million for a, for a five-year M and R budget, and it should be 1.55. And it does say 1.55 in the sentence, but it doesn't say that up top. So just wanted to point out that the recommendation and the scenario four figure should be 1.55 million and not 1.39 million. So one of the questions you may have today is why are we doing this again? Because I believe some of you were on the council when we did this in 2016. And so the reason we're doing it is, again, is because we are required to by the MTC and by the Streets and Highway Code to periodically evaluate our pavement condition. To that end, the MTC provides grants to do this kind of work. You approved that early last year. The MTC picks the consultant, so the consultant who did the study here was picked by the MTC. They have a shortlist, and usually they do them regionally. This was the same consultant company that did Los Gatos evaluation in 2018. So it also has requirements of what the study entails, that you have to have different budget scenarios and that you have to use their Street Saver software as part of your study. Next slide, please. So what is a pavement management program? It's a tool that helps us make decisions. It's not a substitution for engineering judgment, but gives us a baseline of how to take care of the pavement in the city. It answers four main questions, which is what does the city own? What condition is it currently in? How, what repairs are needed? And about what timeframe to keep it in a good condition? And how much is that going to cost us to do it in a cost-effective manner? So condition is measured by what's called the Pavement Condition Index, or PCI. This is something that's standardized. The consultant who went out and did this has the team who really does nothing but go out and observes pavement and sees the distress and gives it a ranking. It goes from zero to a hundred. Zero being the worst, a failed street that needs to be reconstructed, and a hundred being basically a brand-new street. I do want to note this scale that is in this presentation, and that was in the staff report, is the one that the MTC uses. And so I kept that consistent throughout. The consultant used a scale that was still the zero to twenty-five, twenty-five to fifty, fifty to seventy, seventy to a hundred, but they called them different things. The fair, they called good, and the good, they called very good. Just so we can stay consistent with your prior recommendation, we stayed with the scale of very poor, poor, fair, and good. So just to give you a visual of what a good pavement looks like, this is on Eaton. It's a PCI of seventy-seven. Really, there was no cracks, there's no real distress. There's good drainage because there's curb and gutter on the street. So that is what a good pavement condition looks like. The next slide is what we consider fair. There is some cracks in there, but still very salvageable. This is on Dave's Avenue. And then a poor-conditioned street. This is Seaberry, which is off of Constitution. This is actually the worst street in the city. So it has major cracks, is gonna have to take some major rehab to get back up to an a hundred. Like I said, worst street in the city, which is very good that we have no failed streets. I threw in a slide there for a failed condition, just so you could see what it looks like. It's kind of sloping off. You're basically gonna have to do the whole base over again, build a brand-new street. That is not Monteserino. I'm not actually sure where they got that image from. So our current condition, our current, for overall for the city, is a sixty-nine, which is really at the top of the fair category. It's split up between arterials, which for here is Winchester, collectors, which is a small part of Quito that's in the city limits, and then the rest of the city, as expected, are residential streets, which overall that average is also a sixty-nine. This is a significant improvement from our 2016 P and P, which was a PCI of sixty-three. So through both the efforts of putting more money into the general pavement management and then also the neighborhood improvement projects that were done over the past few fiscal years, the failed streets have been completely eradicated in the city for the time being. And the poor streets have also been reduced, and then overall more good streets, which gives us an average of sixty-nine. So very close to the council goal of seventy. Just for comparison, PCIs of nearby agencies were right in there with the cities and the county around us. I will say that this data for everyone but for Monteserino was reported data to the state from 2018. They all have their own pavement management programs. So there is a chance that those are a bit higher now than what is depicted here, but still very much in the ballpark. You can see all these PCIs are above the state average of sixty-five, which is really good. And that, one slide back. The MTC average is seventy-five. And many cities are below the seventy-five, including here in Santa Clara County. Next slide. So the reason the PCI goal for the MTC is seventy-five has to do with pavement depreciation, which from this image you can see is not linear. So the idea is that over the life of the pavement is much cheaper to keep it up over time before it gets to a fair or poor condition, rather than waiting for it to be in a poor condition and having to rebuild it from zero. That curve gets way more steep when you get into the fair category. And so it's in the city's best interest to keep the pavement in a good category. And that's why the MTC recommends seventy-five, to keep the streets solidly in the good category. The MTC requires us to do funding scenarios. The consultant for this project did five. I'm not gonna really talk about the unconstrained scenario, because that is a very large investment. And I'm also not gonna talk much about the do-nothing scenario, because that's just not a very good idea. So scenario two is our current investment level. And what I mean by that is our current formula funds that the city is guaranteed. So that's from gas tax, from our vehicle registration fees that we get, our MRA, which is SB one, so that's a fairly new source of income, and Measure B, which we just started getting funds for this fiscal year. All of those funds are based on tax revenue, so it will fluctuate from year to year. These values were used as conservative values. So it's expected over the five years that this will be a minimum funds we would get from these formula funds. The other two scenarios considered were to maintain the current PCI sixty-nine and then to increase the PCI by five points to seventy-four. So this is kind of hard for me to read, but I believe you have it in front of you. We have the different scenarios and what that would mean for our PCI. So I will say that all of these do have a section of poor. That's because the MTC recommends a best-first scenario, where you keep up your good streets the best you can and then repair, let the poor, and that lets the poor streets go into some disrepair. So you don't leave them forever, but it does create over time more poor streets, because it's cheaper to keep up your good streets, and then you have a higher PCI over time. The three scenarios that I mentioned, all of them reduce the poor streets and increase the good streets. It's really just kind of what the council wants to have as an overall goal. The staff recommendation is to improve the PCI to seventy-four financially. Next slide, please. One up. Thank you. What that means is we'd have to come up with about $60,000, which is about twenty percent of the recommended budget to improve the PCI to seventy-four over the next five years. Like I did say in a prior slide, the formula funds that I mentioned are estimates. So it is very, it is, it's very possible that it could meet the entire $310,000 in a given fiscal year. It's just not guaranteed. Next slide. So in conclusion, the city network is in a fair condition. It is very much on its way to being a PCI of seventy, which is in the fair category, or in the, I'm sorry, the good category. Actually, by next year, which is a couple of years before the council's previous goal with the funding that we anticipated. Staff does recommend a budget increase to $60,000 a year to get the PCI to seventy-four for the aforementioned reasons. I brought this same report to the Better Streets Commission last Thursday, February thirteenth. They unanimously recommended this scenario as well, citing it was cost-effective within the city's spending abilities and approaches regional goals. I do have some extra slides if you had any detailed questions on what pavement stresses look like or kind of, or PCI over the past ten years or so. But that concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you. Councilmember questions? Councilmember Turner?
Yes, could you explain what failed means in your, in your slides here? Does that mean we did, we did the pavement and it didn't pass? You see the red, if you go through the slides over?
Sure. So I think the bottom one there is Steve. So right now, we don't have any failed streets.
Oh, okay.
Those, I think one more slide up, Steve. Are projections. And the reason that there would be failed streets is because there's currently, there are poor streets that would move into the fail category because we are spending more money maintaining the good streets rather than bringing the poor streets to like a fair condition or a better poor condition.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Labubé.
Can you remind us, so how much of the budget are we spending now? I thought the program was something like eight hundred K or something? But is that, does that also include the offsets from, from some of the gas tax and so forth?
So what's budgeted for this fiscal year, there's two line items regarding pavement. One's for $310,000, and that's for this program we're talking about, pavement management. The other one is $500,000, which is for what we were calling a neighborhood improvement program, program, projects like we did on Blanchard, and then this past year on Villa Vicaro, and Palisverdes, and Equestrian. So those are two different line items in the budget. This year, I believe the formula funds covered all of the, all of the pavement management budget, especially because we got some back pay from Measure B this year.
So, so the proposal is to spend a new sixty K per year? That's, that's the proposal?
It would be sixty K over the formula funds every three seasons.
Which is an increase over last year, year-over-year increase?
It would be the same. For, if you went with that recommendation, it'd be $300,000 for next fiscal year, which is the same as we're spending this fiscal year.
And, and all of that will be offset, or no? I think we're short, saying we're short sixty K?
That is a conservative average. So I would say at most, we'd be short sixty K. The state every year estimates how much SB one funds we're getting, and the BTA estimates every two years how much Measure B funds we get.
So we would be allocating approximately sixty K out of general fund?
Correct.
For a year, for five years?
Yes.
Any other questions? Councilmember?
Yeah, thank you for the report. I think it's helpful, and it's good to have decent streets because it helps. You know, when you have less wear and tear, your cars don't break down as easily. So I, you know, if we can get, get it to the seventy-four level, I think that's probably the right way to go. I was actually surprised, I went to Pakistan a couple of months ago, and some of the freeways in Pakistan Lahore, which I didn't think had any freeways, are now better condition than some of the freeways in this country. So this is what it's saying, we should have decent freeways, decent roads.
One more.
No questions. So I guess my question is, right now, we're just receiving the report, and then we're bringing this into the budget consideration-
Correct.
As we do the budget round.
So staff is looking for direction to bring into for the budget discussion.
So then I should move to accept the report and direct staff to follow funding option number four?
One more question. So do you, do you have any items for, scheduled for neighborhood improvement? So this'll, this'll bring us our pavement index up to seventy-four if we continue this level of funding. Are there other big projects that might be kind of looming out there that you think are in need of more capital investment?
Yes, and I'm preparing a staff report for next meeting-
Okay.
Regarding that.
All right, then. So do I make, do we have a motion to accept the report and directs? Do I, do I need to motion, Mr. Leon?
Public comments would be next.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Do we have any public comments regarding street report? Closing public comments. Now, do we have a motion to accept the report and direct staff to follow funding recommendation four?
Do we have the screen?
Yes, I have a motion by council member, or Mayor Protem Maluthhold, and a second by council member Alahi. You should be able to vote. All votes are in, and it passes five-zero.
Thank you.
Item ten, consideration of a city of Monteserino community grants policy and process. Mr. Leonardo, do you have a report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In 2019, the city council of Monteserino held their strategic goal-setting session. During the session, the council recognized the need for a process to help evaluate grant requests from community-based organizations or CBOs. Currently, no such policy exists. The intention of adopting policy language is to establish fair guidelines and directions for requesters so council members can better accommodate the public with grant requests. In most jurisdictions, an application process is administered. Guidelines which establish the criteria for evaluating the application should be adopted by council. In addition to guidelines for evaluation, staff recommends a set amount of available funds to aid in budgeting. For instance, historically, less than 20,000 has been awarded by the city of Monteserino in the past. And that concludes the staff presentation. I'm open for questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Alahi?
Yeah, thank you for your recommendation. I just wanted to see the, is there a limitation on where the funds could be expanded? I mean, are we limiting it just to the city of Monteserino or just to Los Gatos, Campbell, and Saratoga as the surrounding cities? Or are we doing it on a need basis, let's say, for, for a proper organization that otherwise, you know, is doing good in the county of Santa Clara? Would that, the policy that you're, that is set forth, does that contain those kind of restrictions or limitations?
Thank you for your question, Councilmember Alahi. Typically- Typically, in most cities, there is, the, the grants are essentially, they have a nexus to the community. That's one of the recommendations in the policy language. And as a sample policy, of course, council can adopt any policy language they prefer. But typically, in the neighboring jurisdictions, the organization or entity is a local entity by local volunteers and it has, in the case of Monteserino, for instance, historically, you've contributed to Jazz in the Plaz, Music in the Park, those kinds of, or the art docents, you know, the art docents teaches at Dave's School, the Jazz in the Plaz, Monteserino residents attend those, those types of events. Therefore, those would be, that would be the kind of recommendation we're looking for here in the recommended policy language.
Thank, thank you for clarifying that. I just wanted to push it because it's a rich city in the neighborhood. I think if you support other events in the next-door rich cities, we may not, we may be leaving out a lot of good community organizations that are serving our community well and probably could give us a better buck, you know, bang for the dollar. So I'd like to see it expanded to, to cover other organizations that are worthy of being supported. Obviously, the city council would take a look at it, but not just exclude them automatically because they're not in one of our rich neighborhoods.
If I may, I, I, my understanding is, is that this doesn't preclude anybody from applying. I think anybody can submit an application via the website and put in their information. And I think it's really up to our discretion. I think these are simply guidelines and we can certainly entertain anybody that comes forth as long as we, we discuss it and deem that they are, they'll use the funds properly and they'll meet certain guidelines. They don't have to meet every guideline, but I think, I think it's, there's room for flexibility there.
That's, that's perfectly acceptable. I mean, it says community grants policy. I guess if we would say community grants guideline, that would probably cover that.
There's a, Mr. Rudin?
Yeah, I mean, the, right now, it says that the evaluation criteria are that the organization and it must be a local entity, serve Monteserino residents or have a nexus to the Monteserino community. The organization or entity must provide their services or event free to the public. The organization must be a nonprofit and puts five oh one C three, although there are other kinds of nonprofits which potentially, you know, it could be expanded to this, but five oh one C three is, you know, pretty straightforward one. I think certain other jurisdictions consider five oh one C fours as well. Organization or entity must comply with all local, state and federal laws, including but not limited non-discrimination requirements. And then the organization or entity must be volunteer-led. So that one, I think, you know, would probably discourage a large five oh one C threes, which might be, you know, some large tax-exempt entities that, you know, have actual employees. You know, this would, this would really focus funding towards much smaller organizations more likely than not.
I would like to add a few thoughts here as well. For instance, councilmember Alahi said that organizations, you know, there's, there's needy, needier communities that could benefit from contributions from Monteserino. One entity, West Valley Community Services located over in Cupertino, serves residents of all areas and they also serve the Monteserino community. So it could be an agency like that, which is also in reference to what the attorney said. It's not necessarily a volunteer-led organization. I think the key thing to think about is how much do you want to give? If we're looking at twenty thousand dollars and we're looking at organizations, you know, it's taxpayer money, we just had a discussion on our streets and things like that, so we have to be mindful. How much should we give and who should we give it to? Because it is the taxpayers' money you're giving away and it is essentially a grant coming out of our pocket. There are other agencies such as churches, such as the federal government, such as the state government, all kinds of other organizations that give money. We're giving out taxpayer money, so that's something to consider when we're doing this. I just wanted to raise that point as well.
Yeah, so just to follow up on city manager's comments, really, there, there are some restrictions on the use of grant funding by public agencies, particularly the city. You know, the city and the courts will defer to the city's interpretation of what is a public benefit, but there has to be a public benefit that can be articulated to, you know, to the city, to the citizens of the city by the use of that grant funding. So that's why there's the nexus requirement.
Right, right.
Last but not least, we included a sample application that we've already created and we can post this online and the applicants can apply online. So the disclaimer has been reviewed by the city attorney here and the boxes on the grant application kind of go or match the guidelines, the sample guidelines that we've established. But if there are any changes, we can change this. And if you adopt the changes in this policy this evening, we can get this out quickly, get it up on the internet quickly, advertise it and have it be ready. I put in here a deadline for May fifth for the applications to be turned in and we can consider it at the annual budget. Actually, I said May nineteenth, excuse me. Oh, they must be filed by May first, but they will be evaluated by the city council on May nineteenth, is what I meant to say. Thank, thank you.
All right, councilmember Turner?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to, uh...
A public hearing?
Oh, yes.
Public hearing is now closed. Councilmember Turner?
Okay, so make a motion for, to adopt this community grant policy and process.
Do we have a second?
I guess before, before we get there, I think one clarification was that we do want to say five oh one C three or similar. We should clarify that so that it's not a limitation, because it is in the must-be policy.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the community-based organization grants evaluation criteria, those are the criteria that council's going to be, according to its policy, or according to proposed policy, those would be the criteria that the council is looking for in determining whether or not to award the grant. If there are other criteria you would like to apply, now would be the time probably to discuss whether those should be mandatory or, you know, encouraged, right?
So I was, I was referring specifically because this was a prescriptive must-be.
Yes.
And the five oh one C three. I just wanted the flexibility, if there are other types of entities that are equally qualified.
So you would say language that, or other public entity?
Well, yeah.
Or other nonprofit?
Nonprofit entity.
Right, must, entity must be a nonprofit. And then if we have the parenthetical, is the five oh one C three or similar?
Yeah.
In parentheses.
Right, right.
Yeah, it's fine. Right there.
So we can amend the motion to include that edit?
We need to get a second and then a, second and then a friendly amendment and then a friendly amendment on the second.
All right. There's a friendly amendment. Are you willing to accept the friendly amendment? Okay, I am too. Oh, sorry, you did have a second. Should be able to vote. Okay, all votes are in. Motion passes five zero. Thank you. All right, next item. Twenty twenty city picnic. Now, should I have Mr. Leonardi's or Andrea?
Good evening, thank you. This, this item is before you to get to collector direction as to whether the city wants to host an annual city picnic. The date that we're looking at would be August twenty-second, which is the latest that we can have at Vesona Park because they are closing it earlier each year for the festival of light setup. So staff is looking for direction, whether you want to hold that picnic and if so, to determine a budget or to have at least an idea of the budget. Last year, there was, it was budgeted twelve thousand dollars, which was, was budgeted. And I believe we came in about six percent over, almost seven percent over. The, the bud, or the picnic came in at twelve thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars and sixty-six cents. The last two years, we've had record attendance, which has, has driven up the cost of the picnic. Also, there's been increases in the food cost and because we've had greater attendance, we've had to rent tables and chairs. So that's part of your, your increase in cost. So that's it. And I guess the reason that, well, the reason that we're bringing it to you so early is that in order to make the reservations, those have to be done six months in advance and you have to be up at the crack of dawn to grab that one reservation for that, for the same spot that we've been having at the picnic in for the last several years, which seems to accommodate everybody with parking and restrooms and that sort of thing. So, so that's it. Just one, whether you want to host the city picnic and if you do, what kind of budget are you looking at?
Okay, thank you.
Well, I, go ahead.
Well, we'll start with councilmember Turner.
May I?
Yes.
You may.
Yes, you do ask me.
So I wanted to see if, if you would be open to having our partners there again, like, like Serg and, and all of them and to, you know, to, to host. I think the dog would be nice.
From the police? Oh, Serg Dog?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we also talked about having San Jose Water come and put up a, a tent or a table for information.
So are we charging any of these guys any money or that's all on the house?
It's all on the house. They have to pay six dollars to get in.
You, you, you guys do a tremendous job on that and I know you personally put in a lot of hard work. Is there something we can do to raise some money? For example, like raffle tickets or something else like that?
I, Sergi, I'd want to know about that. Is there something they can do to raise money?
Raffle tickets over there?
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
Because if we can budget a little bit, I mean, all those people coming there.
I would suspect that the answer is probably yes, especially if we're like getting donations and raffling them off. The city could probably keep proceeds, use them to pay the cost of the expense, yeah.
Sounds like councilmember Alahi has volunteered to spearhead that effort.
You could always do a cash raffle.
I'll be happy to help. I'll be happy to help.
He can also volunteer to clean the cables before and after.
I was going to suggest that there could possibly be like a dunking booth. And it doesn't have to be council or managers or, or, it could be police officers.
I don't know, it could be dunking there or dunk.
We're going to make sure.
The way this is going, whoever suggests something gets to do it. So please take a look at that and I think otherwise, it's, it's a good entertainment for the city, I think. It's a good value.
All right, then, are we okay directing staff to proceed with picnic plans and consider of increasing the budget to fifteen thousand this year? Just, just to have that? Okay?
I think the attendance is on the rise for a reason. Because it's a very fun event and city people or the residents appreciate it, so we should go and do it.
And the reason I said a raffle because I think your attendance is going to be jumping at a higher rate. Because this is like a, you know, one of those curves, the more people come, they bring more people, it's free food and it's good food, so you get more people there.
All right. Moving on, commission and committee reports. Member Alahi, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I attended the ABA meeting in San Francisco last, last Friday, I think it was, or Friday before, but it's, I mean, it's an eye-opener. I mean, this philosophy upon building more houses for the homeless, it's not, it's not a, I mean, I, I understand it's not, it really isn't a policy to build more homes. It seems to be more of a policy to socially equalize the, the gaps in our community, to balance it out. So, I mean, I, I actually asked a question to, and I said, you really have a transportation problem, you solve that, you solve your homeless problem or your housing problem. And the response was, you want to send all your people who want to live in Monteserino to Brentwood or someplace else and you should not be pushing out people from your neighborhood. So I, I mean, I, I looked at it, I said, you're not really approaching this to solve a housing issue. You're approaching it because you want to equalize where people get opportunities, which is, which is fair, but call it what it is. I mean, if you want, people live, live in better neighborhoods, they go, can go to better schools, there are other opportunities. The housing stock is not there. There was a lot of questions from a lot of, you know, city council members that were there, basically saying there is no housing stock here, but the trend seems to be, we're going to give you RENA numbers, which are going to be three times as much as last year. And we're going to ask you to maybe build multiple housing. So some of the places where people want subdivisions with three houses, they want, may want to do, build multi-apartments out there. And that's the direction it's going and maybe the city needs to start reserving some funds to buy land or property where we can then control if we have to build something that we can build on it. The SB fifty was defeated, you know, by quite a movement and that movement is still there, but Senator Viner still wants to go forward with something else. You know, he wants to go with a baby SB fifty. He's reserved a slot to be able to present other bills, you know, because the time expires and he's reserving slots so that he doesn't know what those bills are, but, so he can move, move them forward in the assembly. So I suspect, suspect those are going to be coming, coming up. So I, you know, I think we need to probably just double up and make sure we can restrict it as much as possible and on the other hand, be prepared to deal with the numbers that we really can't deal with.
Any other committee reports?
I have, I have, I have two. So I had a, a committee meeting from the Clean Water Board that, you know, that it's an ongoing, it's quite a nicely-run organization. There's quite a lot of state regulations around discharge permits, which they are basically dealing with and have multitudes and layers of programs around it. A lot dealing with, for example, microplastics and, and watershed and cleaning up all of that water and anything that kind of flows towards the bay. One kind of very unique thing that they're doing is that they do have a neat outreach program and they're generating some multimedia programs and also they'll be installing around the West Valley area, some new trail signs around microplastics and waste discharge and so forth, just to, to kind of ramp up awareness. Second meeting is really around collection and recycle. There's a lot of new state requirements around food waste preparation and collection and so forth and, you know, in the hotel industry, removing little plastic bottles that you're allowed and a lot of, so big initiatives. Most of that is not coming online for a few years and so, but there's a big planning ramp to get these things in place. And over and above that, there are some contracts up for renewal. And so there is an ad hoc committee that I am not a member of, but they are doing some pretty heavy-duty contract negotiations in preparation for renewing a new collection and recycle contract. So that's small progress report.
Thank you. Moving on to councilmember comments.
I may. It's really kind of a comment and a question rolled into one here and probably for Mr. Leonardi, wondering about, I think it's eighteen eight oh one Saratoga-Los Casas Boulevard, what the timeline looks like. I know that was originally coming up on our calendar. They've been talking about resubmitting. I don't know what the timeline, whether it's been resubmitted and we have a timeline to bring it up before the council, but we certainly want to have some time for public comment. I expect there's going to be a lot of neighborhood opposition. We're going to need to see the plan early and deal with it. So I'm just wanting to be aware of what the schedule looks like and what the timeline is on that.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm going to defer to Mr. Rudin. There was some issues with the SEQA report that had to be cleared.
Basically, the, the public hearing for that project was noticed in advance of the actual staff reports and staff recommendation being complete, so staff are still working on that. There is the potential that the, that there may be recirculation of the SEQA document at this point, but it's too early to say for certain. So I understand your request to have the plans available, you know, and have the public hearing noticed early. You know, staff, I think, will try to accommodate that when the project's actually ready to come before council and it was not ready to come before council at this meeting.
So does it have to go back to the street commission or?
The what?
The, does it have to go back to the site and architectural commission?
No.
Mr. Rudin, do we have kind of a guest limit on time when that may come forward in the future?
No.
I guess, I guess my question is, I mean, the, the other thing is, I mean, we have seen staff reports that were effectively, put a spin on it, pro-development, justifying the how to approve the project. And my concern is that when we see that, it comes before the public looking like the City of Monteserino is promoting this and it is a done deal. And so my concern would be, and if we're, if staff is developing such a report that basically says, staff has reviewed this and it is now approvable way in, and then that's the first time we bring it to the public, that's my concern. Having a, a staff report that basically is a roadmap to approval and then we're the bad guys if we don't approve it is not something that I like to see. I'd like to see... I'd like to see what all the alternatives are, whether the design guidelines are being met, what the community thinks about that, and then we make a decision. So I, I don't know if there's room to do that. Maybe we have to have a, it's ready-to-go staff report before we even see it, but I don't like that, so.
Well, I, I'll just address that in terms of, I know the typical staff process is to discourage an applicant to, to try to bring, so the decision to bring a project to a public hearing before an approval board, such as the Site and Architecture Commission or the city council, is ultimately the applicant's. You know, we can't force them, nor can we keep them from bringing it forward. The staff position is typically to do the analysis as to whether or not it can qualify for approval. Obviously, if the staff, sometimes the staff might do the analysis and determine that it can't qualify for approval, and the applicant will say, we'll bring it to the council anyway, but that would be a very foolish applicant. So that is the reason why typically you will see a staff court that says, yeah, well, we analyzed it, and, yeah, it meets these minimum standards. And, you know, that's not atypical in terms of any sort of, you know, project that is before you for land use approvals, because an applicant's going to be advised by staff early on in the process, while these are all problems, you should fix them before you try and submit this, so.
All right. Any other comments? Moving on, City Manager's report. Mr. Leonardi?
Thank you, Mayor. This past week, we had a very successful Neighborhood Watch meeting, fourteen residents, including three council members, the mayor, Councilmember Turner, Councilmember Labouvet. And thank you for bringing the cookies and treats for us. And we also, today, I met with you, and we discussed putting Neighborhood Watch online on Nextdoor, and it looks like we're already getting that going. So we have Neighborhood Watch online as well. Just wanted to bring those points forward on Nextdoor.
Thank you. All right, moving on, future agenda items. Member Labouvet?
In terms of the, the annual report, I'm wondering if we should formalize some sort of a policy around, around outstanding pension liabilities and so forth, and make that a priority during the budget cycle to try to pay those down as much as possible. And, and the fact that we really have no reserves against other employment benefits, you know, the OPEB type line items, and this is the, the medical for retired retirees, you know, we should probably also start some sort of a program to, to claw back some money and hold that in reserve also.
Is this similar to like a Section one fifteen trust or an OPEB trust fund?
Something, right? I mean, the fact that we have nothing in place for those monies just means that it comes out of, I'm not sure where it comes, probably out of general fund, right? So, so those, those are absolutely uncovered, but at least the, you know, we do get a report around unfunded pension liabilities for current employees, and that's certainly something that's actionable, and we can do something about. Try to stay ahead of the curve and de-risk those, those funds for our future retirees.
Thank you, Mayor. And to answer Mr. Labouvet's question, so myself and the finance, interim finance manager are going to attend a CalPERS seminar. It's going to show different options which address unfunded pension liabilities. And as well, I was going to be bringing forward that idea as part of the strategic goals under a category of fiscal responsibility, being the top-level goal, and addressing unfunded pension liability payoff schedules and different alternatives as a sub-goal where we can actually adopt a resolution and go forward with a plan, so.
I like Mayor Protem Luthold, sorry, comment earlier though about that, yeah, try to, it should be a priority but not mandatory, right? So.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes, I wanted to, to highlight here, if we could start the budget process earlier than what we did last year, that, that would actually help. Last year, we were pretty late. And then the other one is, if you could come back and talk about the progress you made with our finance department getting us off paper and pencil. To the new twenty-first century.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner. I was not here last year. I don't know when the budget process started. I assume it ended by mid-June when you adopted the budget, because the fiscal year ends June thirtieth. But my intention is to, around early May, have a new budget in place. And the goal this year is to obviously present the budget in a different manner. The same numbers, but a different, more comprehensive approach to the budget than has been used in the past. And regarding the changes in the finance department with the payroll and things, we're looking at a number of things to streamline the operations and to make it, I say it, easier for the next person to transition into the spot moving forward. So anybody who has the skills, and the new job description that we wrote can step into the role and be the finance manager of the organization. We're kind of waiting to see what happened with the compensation study and the labor negotiations and things moving forward on that position at this time.
All right. Any other questions or agenda items? All right, then, it is nine forty. The City Council of Montessorino meeting is now adjourned.